I must have moved you this way instead of that way because your thing is so close. Oh, I don't know. Before you had to look in back.
The Tuesday, October 26, 2021 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands my nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as a law.
Just a brief announcement about an opportunity we offer our residents called Open Podium. Open Podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government prior to each council meeting. Typically are held, not tonight, but typically the first and third Tuesday of each month from 6:30 to 6:55 prior to our regular council meeting here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at Open Podium, please do contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter so we can be better prepared for you. Open Podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about Open Podium, please do contact the city manager's office. So tonight, we have an HRA meeting, Housing Redevelopment Authority meeting, which the council serves as that body as well. We have that HRA meeting tucked inside our regular city council meeting. So I will now call the HRA meeting to order with the roll call. You're over there.
Yes. Councilmember Freiberg?
Here.
Councilmember Norrigan?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Toomey?
Here.
Mayor Case?
Here.
So the first order of business is to approve the minutes of our last HRA meeting, which was held back on September 7, 2021. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the HRA meetings from the September 7, 2021 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right, Mr. Getcho, the main order of business here.
Yes, members of the HRA. You may recall a few meetings back, you approved an amended and restated tax increment financing agreement for Paravel, the apartment project that will be constructed near Flying Cloud Drive, Prairie Center Drive. This item is simply to consent to assign the agreement and the TIF note to an insurance company that is part of the financing for this improvement. So it's very much a technical item related to assigning a TIF agreement.
Are there any questions about this perfunctory technical item tonight? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the execution of Estoppel certificate consenting to collateral assignment of Paravel TIF agreement and TIF note to Pacific Life Insurance Company.
Second.
Any further conversation discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn the HRA meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we're moving back into our normal city council meeting with proclamations and presentations. Mr. Getcho.
Yes, mayor and council members, I would like to welcome Chief Sackett. Police Chief Sackett will be presenting an award to the city council based on our reserve program.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight I'd like to recognize the police department's reserve unit who recently received the International Association of Chiefs of Police Award for Leadership in Volunteer Police Service Programs. The ICP is given, award is given each year to recognize a volunteer program that demonstrates innovative, effective practices for augmenting sworn or civilian staff and providing service to their communities. Representatives from the reserve unit were scheduled to receive their award in person at the ICP conference last month in New Orleans, but the after effects of Hurricane Ida caused the conference to be held virtually. We nominated our reserve unit for this award for a number of reasons, but mainly we felt the members of this unit deserved to be recognized for the incredible contribution of time and talent they have given this city since 1973, when the unit was first established. There are 20 adults in the unit who assist sworn officers by performing community service tasks and noncriminal police functions. In addition, certain members of the unit have received specialized training to help out with other functions, including operating the department's mobile command center, serving on the department's UAS or drone team, assisting with fingerprint and booking, and serving on the color guard, which raises and lowers flags at 10 municipal buildings on average of 20 times per year. Reserves are required to work at least one weekend evening per month, attend monthly trainings, and respond to emergency calls when available. Over the past 11 years, the reserve unit has contributed, on average, approximately 4,000 volunteer hours per year. In 2020, during the pandemic, when overall calls for service were down, the reserve unit still contributed 2,665 volunteer hours, more than the equivalent of one full-time employee. Police Department is grateful for the support that the city council has given to the reserve unit during its 48-year history. We would not be able to provide the level of community support we do without the contributions of this very valuable unit. We appreciate the work that the reserves do for our community, and we're proud to present them with this award. Accepting on the behalf are the reserve unit supervisor Boyd Hestorfer and deputy supervisor Andrew Rockefeller.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Getcho, it looks like you're going to turn it maybe over to someone, or is this you?
Yes, yes, Mayor, thank you. The, I believe that we have a couple donations here, three donations that Mr. Lothammer is going to handle.
Your honor, councilmembers, the first donation tonight is from an anonymous community member towards the remodel project at the senior center. And I can tell you that this person is someone who is deeply caring about our overall community, but also the people's lives within our community, and hopes to be able to be helpful and make an impact. We are scheduled to receive bids in the next day for the project itself and primarily funded by all donations. As you recall, over the last couple council meetings, we've had several donations to this project. And hopefully tomorrow, we'll know more about the full price, and our intent is by mid-December to start doing some work on the project. But it's likely a project you'll see back before you for council approval at the next meeting.
That's great. We often say the same comment every meeting when we have these donations, but tax dollars can only go so far each year, they're limited. And so these donations are a great boost to extending, basically getting more out of our tax dollars than we ever could have. So, council, is there some, is some one of you that would like to make the motion to accept this?
I'll move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $4,000 from an anonymous donor to help fund the senior center remodel project.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right, Mr. Lothammer.
Yes, Your Honor, these next two items are actually contributions from our two watershed districts, both of them going towards our tree sale in the spring to residents. And later on tonight, you're going to hear about our urban forest master plan. And part of what's incorporated into that is both funding sources, but also outreach to our community residents. We can do what we can do on city property and park property, but we really need the help from our residents to make as big an impact as possible. So this tree sale, every spring, we're able to leverage quantity, which gets us better pricing and quality on behalf of our residents, but also some contributions from the two watershed districts to assist us in keeping the prices low so that people can plant on their own private property. So the first one is a $1,000 donation from the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District.
Is there a motion to accept?
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $1,000 from the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District to go towards purchasing tree for annual tree sale.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right, Mr. Lothammer, should we just immediately, or you want to say something else?
Just to acknowledge them that the Riley Purgatory Creek Bluff Watershed District contributed $5,000 towards that same sale.
Nice. Motion to accept.
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $5,000 from Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District to go towards purchasing trees for the annual tree sale.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, are there any items to question or to add? I was trying to confuse add and items. Anything from anyone? I do have one on 14A, a council member brief report, actually a request of staff that I'd like to ask all of you if you could agree to. So with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes. We just have the meeting. We did not have a workshop that evening. So is there a motion to approve the minutes from the, this council meeting is September 21st?
So moved.
So moved here, is there a second?
Second.
You've got it. Any items again to question or correct, edit? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right. Consent calendar. Mr. Getcho and our attorney, I did not ask you about this ahead of time. I believe that I need to recuse myself. It's the first item on our clerks list, which is a group of items we clump together and approve all at one time. The first item has to do with Optum Healthcare, and that's my employer, so I'm going to recuse myself. So why don't we have a motion to approve A and then C through N? And then we'll take the separate, I can vote on that, and then we'll take the separate item of B. So A and then C through N is, well, first let me ask if there's any items that you'd like to learn more about or question or pull, or, okay. If not, could I have a motion to approve A and then C through N?
I move to approve the items A from C to N on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm not sure who got that. You can choose.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Cook's choice on that one. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. And could I have a motion then that I will recuse myself for B, if someone could make that motion?
I move to approval of item B on the consent calendar.
Aye, is there a second?
Second.
Let me just clarify what I'm supposed to do here. Do I not vote, do I?
Just abstain.
I just abstain, that's my recusal, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Abstain, me. All right. Doesn't happen enough, I guess, or that often does it? I'm not saying it should happen more often, I'm just saying it doesn't, okay, you've got it, thank you. All right, we do have our one public hearing for this evening. Actually, we have special assessments as well, but, Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, mayor and councilmembers. Our first public hearing is a, it's part of our Castle Ridge redevelopment project. As you know, the first phase, two phases where the, was the Castle Ridge Senior Housing Project. So you can see if you drive out there that, that flagstone building has already been constructed, and that's moving along. The next phase is a multifamily housing development, that's Paravel. You actually just approved in your HRA meeting a amendment to that TIF agreement. And then the next phase, the third phase, involves Chick-fil-A, Bank of America, and the Lakewins Grocery Store. The Lakewins Grocery Store is not going to be a part of this development, but there is another grocery store, a different, larger grocery store that is coming in its place, and that is the item tonight. So in 2020, the city granted PUD, Preliminary Platin Site Plan approval for a 25,000 square foot grocery store, as I just mentioned. That tenant is not moving forward, so now the developer is coming forward, the applicant for approximate 40,000 square foot grocery tenant. And then obviously, due to the change in the size, the change in the site plan, that, that whole part of the project needed to come back through Planning Commission and now the city council. So the applicant is here to provide an overview in a presentation of their new grocery tenant. And then you have a list of actions related to the PUD that you would be approving tonight and directing staff to prepare a development agreement. So I believe that, is it Opedan that is here to present, and then the staff and the developer applicant can answer any questions that you may have.
Great.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and staff. Let me just move this up here. So let's see here, is this all perfect? All right, let me just make sure. All right, good. Well, excellent, it's good to be here. I'm Ian Hawker, 8233 Rhode Island Avenue South, Bloomington, Minnesota. So we've been here a few times, so it's kind of fun to be up here for our final and last time. We're excited that we were able to, you know, finalize this project and put it together through kind of the turbulent times with COVID, and specifically the impacts it had on retail. So essentially, this presentation is just to provide you guys with an overview of kind of the master development, along with our 2020 plan, just so you have the context of that, and then our new plan, just so you can see and kind of get a feel for exactly what we're asking for and kind of what we've been approved through Planning Commission. So Flying Cloud Commons. So about Opedan, we're a Minnesota-based developer founded in 1991. Retail's been, or was, kind of our primary focus starting in the 90s, and then it's manifested into many different product types. We do senior housing now, industrial, multifamily. We still do a lot of retail. So that's kind of evolved. But our roots are in grocery store development, and we've done a handful of projects here locally throughout the Twin Cities. So this is something we're very familiar with. So tonight, I have Jeff Westendorf with Westwood here. He's our landscape architect, as well as our acting civil engineer who's worked with us on this design. So if there's any technical questions that you might have, he can help with that. And then my counterpart, Drew Johnson, is also here. He's another developer on this project that's been working on this since 2018, if you can believe it. So, just to give you an overview, so the project, as you guys probably know, but just to give you a snapshot, it's at Flying Cloud and Prairie Center Drive, right in the heart of the Eden Prairie retail trade area. So a significant amount of traffic volume. It's bound, obviously, but, you know, four lanes of traffic on each side. So it lends itself for, you know, retail, and I think the visibility, along with those traffic counts, and the, you know, the proximity to the anchor tenants as well in the mall, make an attractive site for a grocery store. Hence why we're able to identify another user for this location. So back in 2019, I believe it was, you approved this subdivision here with the Castle Ridge redevelopment. So the overall project Presbyterian Homes LED was 19.75 acres. Obviously, you guys are aware, you've seen their building. It's beautiful, it's built. 274 units, five-story senior housing facility or community. Timberland Partners, Paravel, they're proceeding in the blue outline shaded area as well on their project, five to seven stories, 246 units. Market rate with, I believe, kind of a mix of some affordable units as well within that. And then Opedan's portion is outlined in red, which is roughly 7.27 acres. So we have the grocery store on it, Chick-fil-A, and then Bank of America. This is just a more zoomed-in version so you can get a better view of it. So when we were initially doing this project and we were working with Presbyterian Homes, Timberland, you know, it is interesting to think it was 2018, but we had kind of goals overall for the project. We wanted to create some continuity with it. So a couple of the things that came out of that were creating a sense of place, knowing that we had, you know, essentially three different uses, which all have their own needs, you know, as a functioning, you know, real estate element into the community. So we had to integrate that correctly. So we wanted to have a sensible design, wanted to make sure there was safe pedestrian walkways throughout the site. And with this new plan, we've actually enhanced it, and we've created better walkways that I think are more, well, there's less vehicle and pedestrian conflict points, which is great. And it allows for a better walkway pathway system through our site, as well as into the senior housing development, as well as Paravel, and then taking it over to Riley Creek, or I'm sorry, the Purgatory Creek paths and walkways over there as well. So 2020, this plan was approved. There was a 25,000 square foot grocery store on it. And then we had an Outlet B, which was for a future develop, well, future, you know, retail use ultimately that would go there. And we had Outlet A, which was this kind of pocket park. And then we had Chick-fil-A and Bank of America. So Lot 2 and 3 haven't changed, but due to the increased size of this grocery store, going from 25,000 to 40,000 square feet, we had to combine Lots 1, Outlet B, and Outlet A. And so that's what's kind of created the plan that you'll see next. So tonight, we're just looking at Lot 1. It was the consolidation of those outlots and lot. So now we have about a 5.13 acre site. There's 185 parking stalls with cart corrals integrated within that site. And given the size and the increase of it, we obviously had to increase the parking to meet code and, or get close to code. And, you know, that more or less kind of expanded the site and the parcel to push forward this kind of, we call it a linear park, if you will, as you enter the site. And that'll be, you know, well landscaped, and it'll be a good kind of focal point as you enter into the retail area. And then it actually allowed for us to have a better connection point with the senior housing, and we can, I'll show you guys the pedestrian pathways as well. So here's the new plan, 2021. Like I said, 5.13 acres, a 40,154 square foot grocery store. No changes to Lot 2 and 3, Chick-fil-A, Bank of America, nothing is being changed. A couple notable differences, I already mentioned them, but like I said, Lot 1, Outlet B, and Outlet A, those were consolidated. The grocery store square footage obviously increased, increased parking area. We eliminated the coffee shop and the restaurant that we had at one point proposed for Outlet B, just because we no longer have the square footage to do that. But we improved, like I said, the pedestrian circulation. That was something through Planning Commission that was very important that this new plan was able to address. And then, as I mentioned, no changes to Lot 2 and 3. So this is just a zoomed-out version, and this shows some of the kind of primary, what we'll call primary plaza spaces, secondary plaza entry spaces, and then the walkway throughout this site. So as you can see, you know, we have a fairly sizable amount of common area that can be utilized for the community members, as well as the residents of the senior housing facility, and then Paravel. The good thing about this site is, you know, its proximity to some of the parks within Eden Prairie, with the creek next door. And so having this integrated into it, I think, is enhancing this site. And then hopefully, you know, as I look at it into the future, you know, some of the other retail across the street that's maybe not quite as integrated, I think, with pedestrian walkways, it's mostly automobile-centric. I think this is kind of that next step to kind of get you closer to that. So we're excited about this plan. Again, this is a zoomed-out version. This shows you some of the walkways and pathways that connect to each one of the other developments. Just to touch on a couple things. So when we did the SRF traffic study update with this new grocery store, the anticipated daily site trips generated decreased by 446 daily site trips on this site with this new site plan. That was driven by the fact that we won't have a restaurant and a coffee shop on the site with a drive-through. So that was a benefit, I think, overall for the site. You still have traffic volume, but it's not to the same level with all those different uses. Now you have three, which I think serves well for the senior housing facility, as well as the residents next door at the market rate project. So 150 fewer AM peak hour trips generated from the 2020 plan. And then overall, actually, the development density increased on our site. We have more square footage than we previously were showing and anticipating on our site plan. Again, that's because of the larger grocery store. So these were just kind of pointing out a couple of comments from the traffic study that we integrated into the plan. You know, notably, we consolidated an access point to the north. We shifted some of the access points as well to keep them centered. We aligned drive aisles, just things of that nature. We really try to integrate as much as we can. We wanted to make sure that, you know, this is something that the city was confident and happy with, and staff would support. And I think through working with Julie and the other staff members in the engineering department, you know, we were able to accomplish this with this site plan. A couple notable Planning Commission comments. There wasn't a tremendous amount, honestly, that came from it, but a few of them, and I just point out, they wanted some additional infrastructure into the amenity area to show for, you know, future lighting of the trees and uplighting. So that's been integrated in the plan, which is a great comment. I think that will, you know, enhance that area specifically into the winter months and the holidays. Additional bike rack locations, so we've added that throughout the site plan as well. There's some bollards that wanted to be, you know, put forth near the loading dock area of the grocery store, which we did. And then one comment that came out of it was, you know, technically, per code, it's five parking stalls per thousand square feet. We're at about 4.6, but if you look throughout the community in Prairie and the Twin Cities, comparably, or, I guess, as a comparable, you know, there's a number of grocery stores here locally that actually have a lower traffic, or a lower parking count than that. So, you know, we obviously worked through our, you know, worked through that with our grocery store. They're confident and fine with it. And coming out of Planning Commission was, we had 190 stalls. They wanted us to account for the future cart corrals, and that's kind of based on anticipated need. So five stalls have been eliminated, so now we're at 185, so 4.6, but nothing drastic. The grocery store user thinks this is sufficient and plentiful, or plentiful. And then crosswalks and pedestrian connections will be constructed of materials, you know, similar and consistent throughout the entire master development. That was integrated and always assumed we were going to do. So there's just one more snapshot of the site plan. Grocery store, again, 40,154 square feet. You can see, obviously, the front entrance, loading dock in the back, just to show you the floor plan, because I'll show the elevations next, because I think it's a really beautiful building. I think it's a major improvement from the previous one that we looked at, which was precast panel. This is modular brick. And so it's four-sided architecture. You've got the front entry point. That's all, so all these different, you know, specific colors are brick, along with masonry units. But, you know, frankly, it's a really beautiful building. And so this just shows you the different elevations from the different standpoints. We've got a green wall integrated into it as well for the portion that's facing the senior housing residents. So there's some of the different materials. As I mentioned, modular brick is kind of the primary material that's being utilized for the exterior. So this will be a very strong, sturdy building. And that's, that's all I've got. So any questions, anything else I can answer? I just.
Counsel, at this point, any questions? We will have a public hearing, have opportunity to ask more questions later, but is there anything right now?
I have a couple of questions specifically on this plan, so.
Yep.
One thing I didn't see on it was, through COVID and continuing, a lot of the grocery stores in town have pickup areas where you can drive up. You've already ordered your groceries, they bring them out, put them in your car.
Yeah.
And probably the grocery stores, the store would most likely, you know, be their competition, have this. But I didn't see a place for that in this drawing. Is there a spot?
Yeah, there's an anticipated area in which they would do that. You know, part of it's kind of based on their anticipated needs and where those locations will best serve the customer. So they anticipate to have this kind of drop-off pickup area, or pardon me, this pickup area for groceries integrated into the site. So if you want, I can pull up the site plan. I don't know if there's a laser pointer here, but I might be able to show some of the area, but there will be.
It definitely will be there.
Absolutely.
I would, you know, assuming that this want is going to go away, might be a mistake.
Yeah, no, I think so. I think it's here to stay.
Continuing, you know, a lot. Are we going to talk to somebody a little bit? I know you had some of the things about the flowers, and there's a lot of grasses and such. Is there actual flowers that are going in here versus grasses and just bushes?
Well, our landscape architect is here, so, Jeff?
Jeff Westendorf, thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Yes, there is a great variety of shrubs and perennials to complement the design for the whole. whole site.
But they're flowering?
Yes.
And actual flowers? You said a lot of natives. Are we talking like cone flowers and asters?
Yep, there's a great mix. And there is a landscape plant on there as well in the middle, so I should be able to see all the species that we selected.
Yeah, I was looking at that. It wasn't, didn't seem to be specific of what went there, just in general, they were going to have this kind of thing.
Okay. Yeah, there's actual callouts of all the different plant materials.
Okay, I don't know, for some reason I didn't see it. All right, but I just wanted to make sure that that is something that we've been asking of people for decades, so.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Further questions? It's up to you if they're related. So council member question here, just if we, should the question be asked now or later? So if it relates to something that the developer proponent could or should answer to, go ahead.
Yep, so thank you so much for the time. And a couple of questions. Going back to Commissioner Nelson's question, I'm surprised that we are not thinking more drive-through pickup rather than parking. Right now, current grocery stores, they have to have, they don't have a way to do it. But since you are new construction, like a bank drive-through, right? And I'm surprised I didn't see that, because these kind of COVID or what our next one is, is going to continue some form than people get used to, just drive-through, picking up McDonald's, Big Mac, just like picking up a whole bunch of groceries, same way.
Yeah, and I mean, I think that isn't something that was integrated in this. I think, obviously, we had a tight site. Maybe in the future, for this particular user, they might do something like that, but they won't do that here. I think the pickup parking stalls, similar to what Target has and Cub, would be something that would be integrated here, obviously, as you had mentioned, Councilmember Nelson. So in the future, though, that could certainly be something that I could see evolving, so.
So also, I think I saw in terms of charging station, you already allocating, I forgot how many.
Between, well, I think we have between three to five stalls specifically for it. That was one thing that was important to have integrated into this from the beginning.
And that we all truly appreciate. My screen just went away.
We have four of them.
So we all truly appreciate it. But now I'm thinking is why you didn't consider solar roofing? Since it's flat roof, some of the power can be generated from the solar power. Any comment on that?
You know, I think that's something that is evolving, some tenants like that, and they request for that right within their leases to eventually do that. This particular group didn't express doing that, but down the road, they are, I would say, a progressive company, so maybe into the future, that's something they might look at doing. But that's obviously ultimately their decision to do. But we've heard that a handful of times. And I think partially with the weather here, it's a little challenging, but the good thing is if you were to do it on a roof in the future, I think the shadowing here would be pretty minimal with the senior housing facility next door. So maybe into the future, it's something they would look at. It's a very expensive investment, but it also is something that people are looking at doing. So in the future, they could.
Just the last question. I'm trying to visualize what is 40,000 means.
Yeah.
Is that size of a Cub Foods store or is size of like Costco?
No, so Cub Foods here locally is probably 95,000 square feet, so this is half of that. This would be more consistent with maybe a Kowalski's.
Kowalski's.
A little bit larger than an Aldi. Aldi's probably 25,000 square feet in that range, so more like a Kowalski's, I would say.
Thank you for the clarifications. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify one thing before we do open up to the public. If you wish, sit down and we'll call you back up if we have questions. And Julie, I think this is probably directed towards you. And by the way, congratulations on your appointment to be the Director of Planning and Development. I'm pleased to have you here. So tonight, we're voting on a building footprint and the parking regulations that go with that based on presumed users, but we are not, I mean, we talk about this as a potential grocery store, but development projects can change uses as long as they fit within zoning and its permitted uses. So I just want to make sure that people in the audience and all of us on the council understand that, I don't even know, I hate to even throw out where to start, but I mean, it could be a hardware store, it just could end up being something else. And the only condition holding that back of the change somewhere down the way in the years to come would be parking if it went against something within the development agreement that was going to stress out the parking. Like huge restaurants coming in, there's, I don't even know, I'm wrong on that too. But anyway, is there anything you could comment to validate what I've said?
Mayor, members of the council, that summary is correct. So with the approval this evening, you'd be approving the site plan layout as well as the building materials and architecture of the building. So if a new user came in that was not compliant with that, they would come back through the process. But you're right, tonight, we're talking about a grocery store. If that were to change before that building was occupied and it was, as you said, a hardware store or some other type of retail use that is permitted in that zoning district, it would be able to move forward.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to clarify. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Council on this particular issue this evening? Okay, council, I believe we can probably proceed and close the public hearing. Well, no, let me ask you, are there continuing issues and questions? Do you want discussion, conversation on this?
I've got one question.
Well, we could, just a thought here, we could go ahead and pass the motion and get a second and then have a conversation. If you feel more comfortable, if something needs to change, then you'd want to ask it now. Do you want to go ahead at this point? Because that's fine.
No, Isaiah, it won't change anything, but there is something I would like to know.
Okay. If everyone's in agreement, then maybe go ahead and make the motion on all of it. We'll get a second and then we'll have some discussion. So is there somebody that wishes to make the motion?
I will move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution for plan unit development concept review on 5.13 acres and approve the first reading of the ordinance for plan unit development district review with waivers on 5.13 acres and adopt a resolution for preliminary plat of one lot on 5.13 acres and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions and authorize the issuance of an early land alteration permit and footing and foundation permit at the request of the developer, subject to the conditions outlined in the permit.
Sir, second?
Second.
All right, Councilmember Nelson, we'll start with you and then anyone else that wants to question or add anything in.
I don't know if it's for staff or for the developers. How sure are we that this is going to be a grocery store, that one is already followed through? I might find, you know, there are a few types of stores that I might have a bit of a different feeling about if they were coming in that weren't grocery stores. So, you know, the idea has always been that there should be food next to this, so how sure are you?
100% sure.
Okay. You're just not telling us who or what.
I'm under, yeah, I'm under an NDA. I wish I could, but I can't.
Okay, but this.
But it'll be a great amenity for the city.
It will be a grocery.
It'll be a grocery store.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And just getting back to my, thank you, my point of clarification earlier, any of our buildings in the city could change at any time within the zoning permitted uses. And so we do, I mean, people sometimes get frustrated. I remember back in the 90s, we didn't have a lot of breakfast restaurant areas. We had all these buildings out there without restaurant eating breakfast areas, and they're like, what are you all doing about that, right? Dave Lingdahl, we would bug all the time. But and the reality is, we don't, as a council, we can, we don't incentivize, we can certainly encourage, we talk, but we don't control the particular enterprises that come into these buildings, the brands. That's just not within our control. This is what we control tonight. I am excited about the potential of a grocery store. I'm thrilled about the 100%. You're going to be exactly held to that, by the way. I'm not sure what happens if you're wrong. But, so I get your concern totally, Councilmember Nelson. And the reality is, it might alter our opinion or our personal opinion if we knew a certain use was going in. But the reality is that if it's legal to go in, our opinion just doesn't count in that case. It's just an opinion. Council, anything else that you wish to question or add? Go ahead. Councilmember Freiberg and then Councilmember Norrigan.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I got a question here. I'm looking at the layout as far as the house and the apartment. In the back of the subject property we're looking at here, I'm familiar quite a bit as far as you look around grocery stores. I understand needing larger semi trucks, I get that. I'm looking back at the bays here. How is that screened from the housing? Because that's going to be, you know, I'm just looking over here. Is that going to be pretty well screened from the people living?
The loading dock area?
Yeah.
Yes. I mean, well, and there is a trash recycling area technically that, I mean, they could kind of visualize, but it's really, let's see here, can I put up my site plan? The zoomed out one might give you a little bit better of a visual just to see, and you'd see it'd be pretty minimal for any view. So I really see it as a, you know, a non-issue for their view. So, all right, here, let's go back here. So you can see the corner of the building, the units. I think it'd be pretty challenging to see anything in that loading dock area, even though it's a few stories taller than the building. Our building's, you know, 28 feet plus or minus, so I don't see that as being a concern. And actually, we did put a green wall there and we have windows, that four-sided architecture to make sure that the visual for the residents in the senior housing community would be, you know, is, I think, as aesthetically pleasing as it could be with a grocery store next door, right?
Because the back of a grocery store can look pretty rough.
Yeah.
There's no doubt about it. And occasionally, we've been looking at scenarios where there's overnight parking, and all of a sudden, they decide to keep the trailers there for a few days and stuff. Do you have, is that something that could happen here? I mean, this is, you know, like, there's no space for them just to park.
Yeah, there's just no space that that would ever happen. This site, again, it's irregular shaped. It's constrained. There really isn't an opportunity for somebody to park a trailer or anything along those lines on this site. I can't see how that would be really possible. So I don't see that as an issue. I know like the Cub Foods, that's a bigger box built in the 90s, I assume.
It's a bigger box, but it's not that much. It's 15,000 more. That's about 60.
60?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the parking lot, the size of the parcel itself, I think it's 10 acres maybe, so there's more room for that opportunity here. It just doesn't function.
Because what I'm looking at is confirming what you're saying. I'm thinking as you're talking, I'm seeing that, I think it's going to be okay. And the screening, I'm looking at right here where your recycling is off there, that, what's the screening height around that?
The screening height around the?
Oh, where you have your recycling cardboard and all, you know, the bins, I'm looking at that right now.
So we have different landscaping there to help mitigate that and block that. In terms of height, I can't recall off the top of my head specifically what it is, but it's landscaping there as a buffer to eliminate that viewpoint, so it isn't obtrusive for any of the residents next door.
Okay. Thank you for your help.
Yep.
Councilmember Norrigan?
Yep. When we changing from the old plan to the new one, have you done any kind of energy consumption analysis between old versus new?
We have not, actually. Because the tenants.
My gut feeling is, being a grocery store, you have more refrigerations, you know, water usage even, right, cooling, so the energy usage go up. And I was wondering, is it worth reconsidering the solar thing I brought it up earlier? Because now you're consuming more energy.
Yeah.
And more production potentially. And as you know, that we have a plan.
Yeah.
Right? And so I was wondering, is anything that we can work with the developer to reconsider that option?
Maybe I'll let Julie speak to this too, but I think I'll cut in a little bit. It's near and dear to my heart. As we travel around and do our meet and greets with businesses and we see all these businesses with flat roofs, I'm wanting solar panels up on every flat roof in the city. There's a difference, I think, so Julie, correct me here or whatever, but between someone, a developer that comes in, builds a building and either sells or leases it out to a user. And so the users are the ones, I think, across, who may or may not own their buildings, who I would love to find ways in the future as a city to incentivize solar panels. I would hope that a grocery store would see it in their best interest possibly to invest in alternative energy just as an eventual cost savings. But, so Julie, I'm going to turn it back to you. I don't know if this is the time that we forced, not forced, but we do something that tries to get alternative energy in, or do we wait for the user side of it?
Mayor, members of the council, that's something that, as you said, is really dependent on the private agreement between owner and occupant of the building. Certainly, there, through the development process, we talk with all potential users and tenants about incentivizing and encouraging them to install solar when they can and how that can help with their project as well as meet the city's overall sustainability goals. In this particular case, I believe the tenant will be a tenant and Opodan will continue to own the building. So we anticipate future conversations with the tenant at a future point.
And if I can quote you, you mentioned this tenant has the potential to be a progressive company that might at some point be interested. But does that, I mean, I'm, I want, I want every flat building in the city to be covered in solar panels someday. You know, as we scaffold that to get there, that's, I don't have great answers. And I know that it feels like we're on this side of it, that this is the time to be doing it, but it just, I think we run into these issues where it's the occupant or the user that really will ultimately determine that. We probably should work in, at some, maybe in a workshop in January or February when we bring this up with climate change, Climate Action Plan. We can really look at, how do we get to 2050 being carbon neutral? And then how do we begin to incentivize the residential component of our city? And I'm sorry, I'm digressing, but I think it's relevant a little bit. And then our commercial part of our city as well. Councilmember Toomey.
Would you be willing to wire the building for possible solar panels in the future?
I think it probably has the ability to do that. Yeah, so it's already wired for that. Yep. It's usually the structural support.
Just like that, all you had to do is ask and it's done. It's impressive.
I would say too, just as a comment on that, so obviously, we can't necessarily push that onto a tenant. It's their choice. But I will tell you that it's becoming more and more normal that, you know, I've seen it in leases for different tenants to have that right to put, you know, some sort of fixture onto the, you know, the roof. And so that's something that I think is just, it's happening. You know, it's a fairly big ship to move, but people are starting to do it. It's becoming more normalized. There's investment dollars there. So I think the broader retail market is doing that. I'm seeing it specifically in the self-storage world, you know, and I know the office tenants, the industrial tenants, so it'll happen. It's just a matter of time.
I appreciate you bringing it up, and I hope we continue to bring it up. And then we can draw clarity as we walk through this together process of how do we get to where we need to get. I'll just throw this aside really quickly.
Yeah, I just wanted to build, Mayor, off the solar conversation really quick, so.
Go ahead. I'll remember mine.
All right. So it's been a while since we had a project before us, but we're part of, we have an agreement with the St. Paul Port Authority where we're in, we do what's known as a PACE program, which is property assessed clean energy. So we have had a couple different buildings in Eden Prairie that did not necessarily have the capital to put solar on their building at the outset. So we do have a program where we assist different commercial buildings in utilizing solar, and then they'd be assessed over time to pay back for that array. And we've had, we've had a project as small as a auto business on Martin Drive, but also a major office building near 494. So we can continue to talk with others about that program and promoting that program, because several other cities do that. But that's a little bit of assistance with actually some financial assistance through an assessment on the property.
I had asked this question too, the last time it came up. I really would like to see the city working on something where we make an absolute decision if we're going to require it or not. I don't know if we can require more than the state building code or not, but at some point, this needs to go forward in a little different manner, but we're not there yet. Your client should be encouraged to consider it so they can see, they can keep their freezers going when all the electricity goes off.
The other thing is that when these projects come before us, you see that it brings out You see that it brings out our creative juices, and we start thinking, and I would only caution all of us and staff as well, that in the moment, as we're approving a project, is not always the best time to make policy. But it does bring up the issues around the need for us to have those conversations in a workshop, in a Saturday all day, whatever workshop, where we begin to grapple with these issues. That's where we make policy in advance, not, but thank you for bringing this before us, because it helps, gets us thinking, but not in the moment as we're approving a project. I, I will say one other thing that, just as a teaser here, that there are about 20 cities all around us right now that are working towards coming together in the second or third week in January to declare a climate emergency and bring that to the state legislature, and there are cities across the nation that are doing this. We're going, I'm, I'd like to have that potential to bring that back to you. Wrapped in a list of all the things we're doing right now within our climate change plan, to show that we're, we're already addressing this, we're already, like, in the game. But the formal declaration would join these 20 other cities, or cities all around us, you'd recognize a whole bunch of them, I'll, I'll say more about that later, so just know that that's coming as well. Councilmember Ryan, a final comment possibly, or go ahead?
An additional comment, you always have the final comment.
No, no, I don't have to have the final comment, and I don't, and I'm not going to limit you to a final comment, but just, it might be.
It's not, so it's not clear to me that, that developer had a discussion with the tenant related to the solar, or you already had a discussion, and both of you said this is not the right time, and we do address this issue in the future, I was not, it's not clear to me.
I, I think, you know, it's obviously ultimately their choice, it's their building, they have certain rights based upon a lease, private agreement between us and them, but I was stating that it's something that I've seen more and more frequently with different retailers exploring solar panels onto their roofs of their buildings, so, you know, maybe there's a recommendation, I mean, from the city's behalf, if you want to see that, I would think, as you were mentioning, you know, there's different incentives, talking and communicating with the tenants directly about those opportunities. Usually, they're aware of them, but, you know, incentives and things like that, that, you know, they become aware of through the city and through actually operating and opening here, you know, open up those opportunities for them to do it. Because from their standpoint, they want to keep operating expenses as low as possible, and if there's a way to do that, there's clearly something that, you know, they would explore. So, we haven't specifically, you know, said, well, we did mention it, we've talked about it, but as I mentioned before, in the lease, you know, there's certain rights that allow them to do that in the future, so it could happen, and it's something that, you know, as a landlord and owner, we would obviously be in favor of, but we, we can't control that now.
I understand.
Okay.
Okay, and thank you.
Yep.
Are we ready to vote? All right, we've made the motion, and there's a second, I believe, we have all that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, welcome to what we believe is 100% chance a new grocery store. So we're very excited, thank you. All right, Mr. Getchell, special assessments.
Thank you, Mayor. Each time, at one of the last meetings of the year, we need to levy all of our various special assessments that have been accumulated throughout the year. The majority of these, and this year is, is just like most other years, are sometimes infrastructure, trunk, sewer, and water assessments for different development projects, residential development projects that occurred throughout the year. So there's a few of those, the exhibit is in the packet of each and every assessment, and every one of these parcels has been notified. And we also have some grass removal that the city does and assesses back, and some tree removal, so there's a few of those as well, that are assessed back to these properties. So we need to hold a public hearing, and then we ask that you pass a resolution approving and levying these various special assessments throughout 2021.
All right. Is there any presentation whatsoever in terms of the list of them, or we've seen them and...
Yes, they're in the packet, as I said, each, they're listed throughout here, so that, yeah, that's, that's it.
We accept it and got it. All right, council, are there any questions of anything that was in the packet or in the list, or that you'd like to learn more about? This is something we do every year about this time, so it's nothing out of the ordinary. All right, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience? By the way, how would the public have learned of this to come tonight to question? They would have received something in the mail.
Yes.
And they would come to us tonight and say, I'm concerned about this, I don't like this, I disagree, okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on special assessments this evening? Well, that's always a positive, that they were accepted as acceptable by our residents. So, thank you. So, council, why don't you go ahead and close the public hearing, and then go ahead and make the motion?
Close the public hearing for the approval of the 2021 special assessment, and adopt the resolution approving our special assessment presented in the file of 2021.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Anything from staff at all? Nope? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Payment of claims, are there any items that, along the long list of all the expenditures that we, and, and just to educate the public again, every expenditure, every check that gets written, every money that gets transferred, we ultimately are responsible for approving, and it's a very multi, multi-page long list. So with that, is there a motion to approve? The payment of claims, as submitted. I think I just read the motion for whoever says, so moved.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Norion.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye. All right. So now I think we're down to reports of council members, and I had my one item. If you recall, during one of our previous development proposal projects that came before us, we were talking about the issue of neighborhood commercial and what should be permitted uses within neighborhood commercial, and we began to discuss, does it make any sense anymore in the few neighborhood commercial areas that are still out there undeveloped, to have gas stations? And if we were to look at that, my suggestion tonight, if the four of you agree, would be to send it back to staff to look at the way that all of our commercial districts differentiate, but particularly look at neighborhood commercial, and look at the permitted uses within it, and come back to us with, knowing that we are not, I think we were all, five of us not comfortable with a gas station in a neighborhood commercial anymore, I'm not speaking for you, but if that was the direction that they got out of our last public hearing, then they would bring back some recommendations to us that would alter the permitted, current permitted uses. If I remember correctly, it just wasn't really well designated, like, we did not differentiate between, I believe, size, or I believe not even number of pumps between the three types of commercial. So there are different ways to look at this and do this, but that's my recommendation that I, I just would, we don't need a vote now, we would just direct staff, yes, go do that and bring something back to us. Perfect. All right, Mr. Getchell, it looks like you're going to turn it over to Mr. Lothammer, possibly, and possibly Mr. Born.
Yes, we, we have a few guests with us tonight, but I will start with Mr. Lothammer.
Thank you, Mr. Getchell, your honor, council members. We'd like to overview our urban forestry master plan with you tonight. It's a plan that's been before our parks commission, and reviewed, and also commented on, but it's by no means final, and so based on any of your questions or input tonight, we would certainly take that and incorporate that back in. I know all of you do know Mr. Born, or Matt Born, our Parks and Natural Resources Manager, as well as Lauren Stuff, our Forestry Technician, but for those in the audience, and then those watching at home, I want to make sure that they are introduced, because they do work closely with our residents, and their care is not just for our city parkland, or our city land of our forestry canopy and natural resources areas, but also to help incentivize and help our residents understand how they can better their private property too. And as we mentioned earlier, outreach like our tree sales and other efforts to help our residents be able to help with their yard, and make that an even better place, is also helpful to our overall community too. So I'd like to turn it over to Matt, and him and Lauren will overview the master plan for you, and certainly answer any questions at the end.
All right, Mayor, council members, thanks again for having me. As Jay has mentioned, we're here to go over our urban forestry management plan. Some of you may be thinking, why do we need urban forest, sorry, back here, why do we need an urban forestry management plan, or what's kind of the purpose of it? So really, this puts all of our policies, procedures, goals, everything that we have related to forestry and natural resources kind of in one place. It's a really great reference for us to educate residents, educate businesses, educate anyone who is kind of using our, our different policies or ordinances on kind of the background, why do we, why do we enforce these, why do we have these, what's the purpose, you know, what's our end goal in that? So really, helps us kind of get the word out there of, of an overall plan of why certain things we do affect others. It also kind of helps us when we're applying for grants, we can show the different other agencies, you know, what our overall goals are, what we're trying to achieve with our forest canopy, and, and again, really, it's a place, it's a one-stop shop for people to go and look and see the different things that we're doing that affect Eden Prairie and Eden Prairie residents. So as most of you are aware, we do have a few ordinances. This in no way is changing any of those, it's really to support the reasoning behind those ordinances. So we have the shade tree pest control, that helps control Dutch elm disease, oak wilt, and emerald ashbore, now that is the, the hot topic, and kind of the big one going around. Our tree preservation ordinance, you know, deals with tree replacement related to development, whether it's large scale or on single-family homes when it's tied to a land alteration permit or building permit. And then also our zoning ordinance, the landscaping section of that, which has requirements for tree planting in commercial and industrial properties, that those are held against those properties. So really, the things in this plan help shape kind of the, the requests we may have of those people that come in, like we just saw today, on different, you know, things we may suggest, and why we're suggesting those, and what our end goal is with that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lauren, and she'll kind of really run through the beef of the plan.
He's a little taller than me. Good evening. So, the urban forestry management plan, what we want encapsulated well is the whole benefit we get from the urban forest. So in that plan, we highlight items that trees help with. You may have seen this before, when we approved the emerald ashbore plan, we went through a lot of the benefits of trees, but they reduce stormwater runoff, increase home values, combat the urban heat island effect, which is ultimately pavement reflecting sun such that urban centers have a couple degrees Fahrenheit warmer average temperature in a year. They sequester carbon, they improve air quality, and provide habitat for animals. So our plan goes through, what are we doing for tree planting? We have this emerald ashbore, we have oak wilt, we've had Dutch elm disease, we're probably going to get something else at some point. How do we make ourselves less susceptible to that something else? Well, we can do that by planting diversely, so in here, we have that pie chart, which shows our Eden Prairie park system, our tree canopy. As we're planting right now, which we do to replace trees that are removed from emerald ashbore, we're making sure we're planting a diverse range of species, such that when we get the next thing that's going to kill whatever tree, I don't want to jinx us, so I'm not going to say, but, whatever. Whatever it could be, we won't be as susceptible, we'll have a smaller portion of our canopy of that species. So, so we're working on this, Jay mentioned the donations from the watershed district, which helped to fund the tree sale. We can control this on city property, we can't necessarily 100% control this on private property, but we can help to influence that. So by making less common trees that can be more expensive, or not as readily available, because they just don't have that bright, you know, red color of the maples that everyone likes, by making some of these still great trees, but just less well-known, more available, we can diversify private property as well. So, there had been a lot of discussion tonight about climate, and, and I think it would be not fair to pass this slide without saying that this plan does play into the climate action plan passed by the city. I mean, 100%, trees are extreme benefit to stabilizing climate and, and doing all the, you know, great things that, that come along with being good stewards of our climate. And planting can be a huge way to do that, so, you know, we don't want a tree today that's small, we want a tree today that's big. How do we get there? We have to be planting in a way that's going to, going to get us there. So I think this plan highlights, how are we doing that, and how can we continue to do that better? We also go over our pruning and maintenance of city-owned trees, so making sure we are taking care of trees in a way that's going to keep them around the longest. And probably the biggest change of what we've historically done is how we're assessing tree risk. So, we don't want to be removing trees that don't need to be removed, but we also don't want to leave trees that are hazardous. So, this plan identifies what we're doing following industry standards to make sure our parks are safe, and that we have a reasonable level of risk for users while still preserving a really important resource, which is our mature trees. We also highlight the importance of maintaining a current tree inventory, super, super helpful to have a tree inventory, keeps you up to date on that pie chart I couldn't have made without a tree inventory, what we have, where it is, also helps keep track of where we're doing work, how much work we're doing, and then, you know, additionally, really important for applying for grants, again, it's hard to say we need help here when you can't say what you have in the first place, so it's a, it's a good way to keep track of, of this natural resource. And now I think Matt's going to cover this section.
So yeah, as both Jay and Lauren have mentioned, we can control quite a bit of what's happening on city property, but the reality is, the vast majority of our urban forest is on private property. So how do we get this information out to residents, businesses, commercial places that, that have a large portion of our tree canopy? And so that, what we try to highlight in here is the different public outreach and education efforts that we've, we've taken on recently and hope to kind of expand on. Some of those are committing to making sure this information is available to residents and property managers, that could be through our website, it could be through mailers, it could be through special events like our Arbor Day, Tree City USA events, that type of stuff, making sure that this information is out there, and that there is resources for residents to plant trees or take care of their trees, to make sure that, again, the vast majority of the, the urban forest is, is being maintained that's outside of, outside of our control. The other one is to utilize local volunteers. We have a lot of great groups that come out and help do buckthorn removal projects. The Local Chapter, the Wild Ones is one, the neighborhood around Cardinal Creek Conservation Area, there, there's a lot of dedicated groups that want to come out and help. Tree Trust does some, some volunteer tree plantings. We've got some other groups that come out and do seed harvests in our prairies to, to help kind of keep those maintained. So utilizing a lot of those also is a great way to educate. So when people come out to, to volunteer, they learn what we're doing, why we're doing it, and, and kind of help spread that word. And then also partnering with local organizations. We do a lot of project sharing, we do a lot of, of grants and stuff like that to, to help fund, which I'll get into the next slide, but, but really, there's a lot of other resources out there besides us that we, we want to tap into and need to tap into to be able to do as much as we want or need to do. So, so the last thing is kind of those partners, and then also the funding sources. So we really utilize quite a bit of, of different methods and different partnerships and funding sources to be able to maximize our efforts. Obviously, there's, there's part of the general budget that is dedicated to, to parks, forestry and natural resources. We also have the tree preservation fund, which was added when we redid the tree preservation ordinance, where developers can pay into that fund if they're not able to meet their tree replacement on, on their site, and then we use those funds to purchase trees and do other natural resources projects. So really helpful to have that additional funding. Hennepin County Grants, we've been able to, to get quite a few of their... Hennepin County Grants, we've been able to get quite a few of their healthy tree grants. Really, it's been well over $100,000, I think, in the last four years that we've been able to get through them to help with our EAB efforts and some of our other natural resources projects. DNR Grants, so we just got one of those this year. They're helping to fund, and that sign is out at Round Lake, Forest Restoration Project. So grateful that those funds became available and that we were able to secure some of that, largely due to Lauren's hard work and efforts. And then lastly, as we heard this earlier today, the, both watershed districts have been great partners for us, both in providing funding for tree sale and some other items, but also, again, partnering with different projects. So really, really grateful to have a good working relationship with both of those watershed districts and be able to tap into those resources as well. So with that, we'll take any questions.
Councilmember Norrigan? Councilmember Norrigan?
You know, I was thinking Jay was doing all the great job. Now I know, really, you're the man behind that.
So it's really Lauren.
Yeah, behind me, so.
And a woman, or a woman.
And actually, I do, I forgot to mention, but a lot of this was written by Alex Law, who was our Green Court member, really did a lot of hard work and research and stuff, so I definitely want to recognize him as well. Obviously, his term with us ended, so he's no longer with us, but really was instrumental in putting this together.
So I have two questions. One is, how big is our tree preservation fund in dollars?
Our tree preservation fund? I have not looked at that recently, but it's getting up there. We've had a couple of big projects where they haven't been able to meet any of their tree replacement, which was a pretty large dollar amount, but I would say it's probably, last time I looked, is $60,000 range.
So assume it is around 60. How many trees that resulted in 60 trees?
No, so that'll go towards trees. We use some of that funding for the tree sale, for purchasing trees. We've been able to get some grants, too, that have helped with purchased trees, that we haven't had to rely on that. Those grants may not be there, you know, forever. We may not be able to, so we may be needing to tap into that more. But then also, you know, tree bags, stuff for making sure that the trees that we do plant survive. So it's a lot of materials like that as well.
You know, we hear from the residents, you know, one of the beauty of Eden Prairie is all the trees, and the park and trees, and so thank you so much. Do you know how many trees are there under the city property?
Exactly.
Exactly. Or less, more than that. I'm curious, because we put a lot of effort into tree. So is it growing? Five years ago, that's all I really care, I don't care exactly the amount yet.
Yep. So as part of the EAB management plan, we had the goal in there to replace every ash tree, we remove with one and a half trees. So we remove 10 trees, we plant 15. So we have, and Lauren can correct me, I think in the last few years planted over 1,000 trees. So I think we definitely.
So we have more than 1,000 trees, we know that, right?
Yep.
We have 2,303,7,457 last, well, six maybe, because I've one. So I have two questions. I have read that with global climate warming change, the possibility is that Minneapolis-St. Paul area will have the climate of Kansas City by 2050. So if that kind of warming is moving up, and it changes the flora and the fauna, I mean, it changes everything about our landscape, I'm sure there are a lot of trees we plant that live in Kansas City, whatever, but are we looking ahead that certain trees up here will not survive that warming? And then these other Kansas City trees, species are going to be really good and they'll survive our cold in the meantime, you know? Are we looking at that kind of to be ready in case we have a mass die-off around 2040, 2050, 2060?
Yeah, that's definitely something we've looked at, and actually, the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, we were able to partner with them, kind of did more of a test study where they took some of those trees that were more, you know, on the Iowa border or south, kind of more common there, and planted those to see, you know, can they survive now? Can they still survive our, if we get a big cold snap in one of our winters, can they still survive? I don't know if you want to kind of keep.
I would just add, the U of M has done a really good job at looking at all of this, and they have information available for what trees they anticipate, based on climate models, will do well in the future.
So we take that into account when we offer these trees for sale to our.
Yep, I have a spreadsheet with numbers and, yep.
Excellent. That's great to hear. And then both of you standing here, I just need a nod or a yes. So I think it was Stu Fox, I'm not sure who else. Over the years, during campaigns and various speeches, I've made the statement that there are more trees in Eden Prairie today than at any time in our 10,000-year history since the glaciers, because we were prairie oaks, blah, blah, blah. Agree? Can I still make that statement?
Yeah.
Yes, all right. I just wanted that confirmed. Thank you. So anything else that you'd like to say? Mr. Lothammer, anything else? So appreciate your efforts and your work in the city, and I hear your names all the time because people are always calling in regarding trees. It's just a very visible part of what we do, and your names come up a lot, so thank you. And in a very positive way, I might add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't need to do anything or accept.
You do, you do, Mayor. Yeah, we do have a motion.
What we do, we need to recognize and accept. Someone make that motion.
I'll move to recognize and accept the urban forestry management plan.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Getchell or Mr. Lothammer, I'm not sure.
Yes, your honor, council members, I just wanted to give you an update on the art therapy efforts that we've been making. As you remember, council meeting ago, councilmember Toomey had brought up the idea of art therapy to benefit frontline workers. And somewhat unbeknownst to me at the time, almost the very day before, the very next day, our staff had been contacted by an organization, and the organization is Relate Counseling Center, and it's actually now located exactly next to the Art Center. And they do that type of work. And so we got them on our radar. They also have a facility there that does some of that type of therapy. But we did two things. We also got in contact with Ms. Devine and talked about just the concept of art therapy. When I say we, Lori Brink, our Recreation Services Manager, and also Jess Schramm, who is our Art Center Supervisor. So the three of us spent some time learning more about the concept and how we could potentially deliver it. At the same time, Lori and Jess have also met with the program manager over at Relate and talked about this concept and how we could embed it both into our programs and their programs. They have several trained art therapists. And so that discussion is continuing. So although I don't have a formal program to tell you about tonight, we're getting close, but another piece that I do want to tell you about is, we have a commitment from our internal frontline staff to be a beta test. And so we would like to do that first and get some reaction, and then after that, use that feedback and roll it out to the committee with the right format and the right personnel. It's certainly valuable and something that is going to be coming to fruition, but the method, I think, is really important, and we want to get that feedback. But we're really encouraged of having somebody write directly in town with a facility and having it so close to the Art Center that it feels like it can be a pretty ongoing component of what we do. So expect more information coming soon. We've got another meeting coming up with Relate to discuss kind of some potential next steps on how do we actually put a program out there. And then we'll test it and tweak it and bring it out to the public.
Wow.
Thank you.
That's fortunate that Relate was there.
You just get things done.
Get it done.
So I'm going to give you a list. Before I do during the meeting, I just, when you said Lori Brink, I just wanted, I should have added this as a council member report time, but since we've met last, we've had two large civic city events, and led by our staff, but I just want to point out that we, as the council, direct those kinds of things and sometimes the most visible opportunities for the public, for our residents, to become familiar with what we do here at the city. And we had the Citywide Open House, which I don't know what the totals were, but I had to be 1,000 people or more, I mean, it was massively attended, but just to, gosh, to see the excitement and the thanks from the residents and their excitement over their children with fire trucks and police cars and sitting in police cars, and our staff just, can't even say enough, they go so above and beyond, and that's all of our staff. But, and I'm not sure who, Rick, help me, who would have been the head of that event to organize that?
Mayor, you have a pretty big committee represented by all the departments, because as you said, you've got police and fire and Public Works and Commissions, our Commissions are active in that as well.
Everybody, our deep gratitude. I mean, it just really was amazing. I know our staff enjoy that, too, so I mean, they're getting something out of it, but still, they're taking, you know, a day of their time away. It's just amazing. And the second, and I should have prepared for this, was it the Fall Harvest Day? What was the title?
Harvest Halloween Event.
Harvest Halloween.
To Halloween, yeah.
Okay, and again, I've attended, I think, almost all of them for years. Never had the numbers of people that we had at that one. And I know it's a lot because we combined it with the giveaway of candy and the Halloween event. Again, I don't know if we had a count there, it's got to be thousands. Mr. Lothammer, do you have a thought or?
Yeah, you know, we're somewhat basing this on parking issues that happened or were created, but, and also our pumpkin giveaway, which has been a good gauge for us.
And the bags, I think 800 children's bags were given away.
And the bags, yes. So our, we believe about 3,500 people throughout the day.
Which is phenomenal.
And that, you know, we've had that kind of Saturday event in some form or another for quite some time, and in this, by far and away, is more than we've ever had.
And I know there were 167 cars parked technically illegally out on the main drag out there by the Riley Barn. And I know the staff is looking at, do we hold this to another place next to it? I would just like to make the high suggestion to hold it there because of the barn and figure out a way to park them on grass, or we'll figure that out. But it was an amazing event, so, and I think Lori Brink was in charge of that one. So again, thank her, I just, staff, we just have the best staff, we just simply do. So I wanted to call them out for these two amazing events. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn the city council meeting.
Sir, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.